I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is the same, and to God, the individual, the liberty, and justice for all.
So Gavin. Gavin.
It was a very lackluster.
We only really do it on Mondays.
One we can do with just the Patriots.
Gavin. So I'm just going to say a couple paragraphs and then hand it over to them on sprinklers. The sprinkler before what? Yeah. No, I'm just going to hand it off to you. Oh, oh, okay.
Thank you. Ms. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
The first item on the agenda is ID 589-19, a presentation on sprinklers.
Please come forward, and Ellie wants to say a few words before you guys, as you guys come up, to give us some of her research.
Oh, Rhonda's here. Thank you. I just want to say a few words and then I'm going to hand it over to Chief from Alley, and he'll give you the background and the substance of this meeting and path forward. But the long and the short of it is that I am looking at introducing legislation. It's drafted, will be reviewed again, to install sprinkler systems in the historic district, and they're here to defend that objective. So let me just say that in my executive summary to the law office, I wrote this, that "The architecture and building configurations in the historic district contribute to the charm and ambiance of the city of Annapolis. However, their juxtaposition and adjacency to each other also cause a more likely spread of a fire to encompass blocks of buildings at a time. In the last decade, we have suffered five major fires, the more recent being the Annapolis Yacht Club. One fire on the designated streets has the potential to destroy an irreplaceable asset, our historic district, and would forever change a major driver of our city's economy. The installation of a full sprinkler system in these downtown businesses on Main Francis, Marketplace, and Dock Street would protect this asset. Other areas in the historic district would be subject to the existing code for the historic district. Our goal is to have these buildings fully sprinkled, and this team of experts are here to tell you why." Thank you. I'll introduce Chief from Alley now.
Good afternoon.
Alderman Geis, sorry, just one question.
Can I just take a quick question? Are you ex-proposing that the city pay for this project?
The financing model is going to, it's not determined yet, but not, no, it will be a revolving fund, and we're exploring tax credits, and we're also giving up time. And when we have it down-packed, I'll have probably the city manager explain in a little bit more detail, unless you know more than I do at this point. Sorry to put you on the spot there. I'm sorry. About the financing. So we have a sprinkler loan revolving fund, and it actually is a revolving fund. Like, money went into it, money can go out of it to make loans, people repay it, it goes back in, and it revolves. It's actually a revolving fund. There is a provision for tax credits that would only kick in if certain federal and state income tax credits happen first, which may be a drafting error in the original ordinance. We're not sure. Linda Schuett is doing some work on that. So there are also, John Manassa, help me out, I want to call him Water Main, but that's not the right word. What's in the street that you've got to look into?
Lateral.
Correct. The water main is the main pipeline that distributes throughout the city and then a lateral.
A lateral.
Goes to the curb and to the building.
Okay, so we have laterals, and as people connected to the laterals, if we connected them, they would have to pay us to connect them, because it's a utility fund, it's meant to be self-supporting, the users pay for what they do. Yeah, let me just, very quickly, you may remember that we postponed the re-bricking of Main Street, but we didn't want to wait to put in these laterals, so we trench them. And so they're installed, and so we got ahead of ourselves, basically, because we're hoping to get those costs reimbursed. This is from the main water line out to the curb, so the businesses would have to hook up to that at the curb and pay that expense.
And Alderman Geis, the one thing we're doing here is, that hasn't proved successful. So we've cut in, we've took a lot of work out of like, the first step in sprinklers, and no one has taken us up on that offer. So as a council and as a city, we need to work out a way to make it attractive for people to take the offer, and that's what Ellie's been doing a lot of work on, you know? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Doug from Alley, Fire Chief. To my left is Deputy Chief Carol Spriggs. To my right is Captain John Muhich from the Fire Marshal's Office, or I should say, previously from the Fire Marshal's Office, because we just transferred him. And then Chief Building Inspector John Manassa is here with me. So since 1997, the major fire we had in the top of Main Street, the top block of Main Street, there's been on and off, multiple, multiple times, and multiple fires since, discussions about how we can save the historic district in the city of Annapolis. What can we do to prevent it from a major fire destroying the historic district and its historic nature of our town? And like I said, this has gone on and off over, since 97, since the first Main Street, real big Main Street fire. We've since had fires. The farther we get away from a major fire in the historic district, the more it seems to get out of everybody's minds, and then all of a sudden, a fire pops up. So we've been meeting on and off for all these years. The committees have been put together, there's been multiple different people in the committees, but what's pretty common is the fire service and the building inspectors. We've had some building owners involved from time to time, there's been council members involved, and it's gone back and forth, but we believe we're to the point that we're ready to make a recommendation under the public safety side, and leave it to you all to see what direction you want to go. So Captain Manassa, I mean, I'm sorry, Captain Muhich put together like, a 35-page PowerPoint presentation, and he's going to take a couple minutes just to give you the highlights of it, then we'll hear from the building inspector, and then we'll finish up on the fire side, if that's all right. Cap?
Good afternoon. Once again, Captain Muhich, formerly of the Fire Marshal's Office. I'm not going to go through this slide by slide for you. We will email, if it hasn't been emailed to you, it will be emailed to you. You do have the packets in front of you. I'm just going to highlight the things I think are the highlights of this most important thing. One thing I really want us to look at is Georgetown, South Carolina, September 25th, 2013. A fire swept through their historic district, cost $10 million in losses, nine businesses, 11 residents destroyed, 14 people displaced, two citizens, three firefighters transported, 802,000 annual property taxes lost, 136 jobs are lost, six-day incident, nine departments, state and federal agencies were on scene to control this and to also help mitigate this. They still haven't come back. They are also a waterfront community, by the way. So if you go through the packet, and I'm not going to go through them one by one, but it shows the actual devastation, they would face some, they faced some of the challenges that we would, they did, with limited access, water supply, and things of that nature. But what I do want to point out from this is, the South Carolina Maritime Museum was a sprinkler building in the middle of the block. It survived, minimal damage. They had a few sprinkler heads that were actually on the outside of the building that kept the building from catching on fire, and also the inside of the building. So the fire did pretty much stop there on the outside of that building, so it was not damaged.
Can I just interrupt, sorry, just for, Mr. Robert Clark, CEO of Historic Annapolis, is part of the panel, too. If you would sit up at the panel, he's just going to say a few words about the value of the historic district after you're done. Sorry to interrupt, but just.
Oh, no, no problem. So we're going to move on to the December 2005 Annapolis Yacht Club fire, and I'm just pulling these numbers together. $9 million total loss, 20 employees from related businesses laid off, cancellation of the parade of lights, and about three years to rebuild, and that three-year rebuilding process was fast-tracked through the city. We did everything we could to get them open as quickly as possible. November 2005 fire, 122 Main Street, building was a total loss, building was not sprinkled. The yacht club was also not sprinkled at the time, it is currently sprinkled. So the 2005 fire, the businesses that were directly impacted were 122 Main Street, which is AL Goodies, 118 Main Street, the Candy Factory, and 128 Main Street, the Ice Cream Shop. And keep in mind that this occurred at the start of the holiday season, so when these folks are probably making their most money, a lot of places depend on the holiday shopping to make their, to cover their rent for the year. Not only were those businesses out of business, but it also interrupts all of downtown. So 122 Main Street, we lost a historic 1860 structure and replaced with a modern structure. All businesses on Main Street were disrupted due to the damage and multiple buildings and cleanup efforts at that time. And even at that time, we had a low-interest loan available for businesses prior to the fire for sprinkler installation. The December 1997 Main Street fire, 184 Main Street, 1890 buildings, total loss. Landlord at the time estimated the loss was more than $1 million for the building. I don't have the statistics on after that. That building was not sprinkled. It also encompassed five to seven states circa we lost. That building was a total loss. The Christmas store was damaged, and the businesses along Main Street, once again, were impacted throughout the holiday season. Christmas store being closed in December is kind of a hard hit, I'm sure, for them. That again was replaced with, 1890s building was replaced with a modern-style building. It took about 10 years for that to get replaced, and it had a long-term economic impact from city taxes to the employees that lost their jobs. So for your total economic impact to a business lost due to a fire, you have direct impacts, indirect impacts, and induced impacts, and I'm not going to read the PowerPoint to you, but it's a lot of money, it's a lot of impact on the city, it's a lot of financial losses, and we're trying to avoid that with the sprinklers. Costs to the city of Annapolis, just off the top of my head, loss of parking revenue, decrease in property taxes, and the potential loss of tourism and visitors. Cost emergence, loss of business, loss of merchandise, loss of wages and benefits. And we must keep in mind the employees that have lost their jobs. From a historic preservation side, long-term vacant open lot causing severe disruption of street appearance. The historic structures are lost forever. Long-term design review for proposed replacement structure requiring hundreds, if not thousands, of hours of city employees' times. Losing the historic one building at a time. Walk Main Street, walk the city, and see what buildings were replaced, what they look like after the fire. We're trying our best to keep Annapolis historic and keep the neighboring structures from being lost or severely damaged. So one of the pictures in there is of the Notre Dame fire. A resident from Annapolis happened to be at Notre Dame when the fire occurred, she snapped these pictures for me. She was in Lot Outside. Notre Dame can never be rebuilt to what it was. And I would venture to say that Annapolis, as we lose buildings, can never be rebuilt to what they are right now. Some of the main economic driving forces of the city of Annapolis are United States Naval Academy, boating, and the historic district. I don't want to lose any of those. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
There are a few factors to consider, and one of the things I'd like to start with, if you've ever had dental work done, you notice the feel in your mouth of something different, something wrong. And over my years in the fire department, my years with the city, when a fire burns down a building on Main Street, I always think of it as like a missing tooth. It feels like something is gone, something's missing. When that building site lays dormant for sometimes 10 years, that's a long time to have a missing tooth. And it's striking, it's devastating, and nowhere else in the country, and we'll look at, as we talk about this going forward, we'll look at different jurisdictions, different cities, historic cities from across the country. Nobody has the exact mix and the combination of things that Annapolis has, the State House, you know, our, you know, Main Street, the market space, Pinney, Francis, all those wonderful streets, they're just not replicated anywhere. And so our situation's different, and I think we need to think out of the box to protect it. With all the good that the fire department can do, with all the good that we can do in construction, there's only one system in a building that takes an active role to protect the occupants and the building, and that's a sprinkler system. We can put tons of sheet rock in a building, we can put fire alarms in a building, we can put in smoke alarms that tell you that something's happening, but nothing, none of those systems prevent destruction from the fire. The only system that does is the sprinkler system. There's no replacement for it. So keep that in mind as we talk about this in the future, that the sprinkler system is so reliable, it does allow us to do more with a building. So you have a sprinkler system going in, maybe you can do things that you couldn't do without it. You can have a building that has occupants on the second floor sometimes, that you couldn't have that situation without the sprinkler system. The sprinkler system gives you that opportunity. So if you look at Main Street, you look at market space, and you say, "We wish we could do more with those buildings," the answer is putting in a sprinkler system. We have a long history of working out detailed plans. When they include a sprinkler system, it gives a greater degree of confidence, and the building code allows the occupant, the owner, to do more. And that can't be forgotten. So from my perspective, I'm calling on the city council to protect downtown Annapolis. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. When was it, or this code enacted, that forced buildings to start carrying the sprinkler systems? I'm asking that because, are the buildings downtown the only buildings that don't have sprinklers? Like, if I walk to Upper West Street, do they, are they all complying with this right now as well, or?
When you build a new structure, the building code talks about certain size and certain uses. Like, a place that has a large group of people inside, like a big restaurant, you know, a restaurant with a bar, those kind of places, schools, they have a high degree of protection, so they usually have sprinkler systems built into the building code, so when it's coming out of the ground new, it's included. Now, you can build small buildings, like a 7-Eleven rarely has a sprinkler system, because it's such a small building, and there's not really much there. Older structures that have been in existence and don't have a sprinkler system, the existing building code is what becomes the determining document, okay? So when you look at the existing building code, it has this whole system of saying, "Well, if you're doing something small, like you need to change the location of this door down the hallway five feet." Okay, you probably don't have to put in a sprinkler system, because you're making that little change. But when you start to reconfigure the entire building, whoa, now we're like, okay, now you have to evaluate whether a sprinkler system is appropriate. So that's already existing. But what ends up happening is, like, the older buildings, like the Main Street buildings, they rarely fall into that category of needing the sprinkler system installed, unless somebody's coming in to do something, like 152 Main Street's a prime example. They've got permits in to change the second and third floor from offices to residences. They're putting in a sprinkler system. That's going to be one of the first ones that ties in to the existing water main that we upgraded a little while ago. So that's going to be one of the first, that's not being driven because of any specific thing that the city's enacted, that's being done because the owner decided they want to redevelop and create residences. He's doing it to the whole building, so the sprinkler system kicks in. There are other places, though, that, there's a reluctance to put the money into it, and there just isn't, it just isn't happening.
Yeah, so I'm still on that, even though we kind of briefly talked about it, I always think about that first. So the businesses would pay to hook up to the city's existing infrastructure. What if they don't want to do so? Is that why we're saying you have to do so? And also, would you be open to alternative methods besides the sprinkler system that would be, I guess, more affordable? Are there any out there? I understand that this may work the best, but in terms of financing?
So over the years, this committee's gone back and forth on alternatives. We do not believe in public safety, that there is any alternative compared to the sprinkler system, without a doubt. When a business applies for plans in the city of Annapolis, it goes through a plans review process, and if they have alternatives, it's looked at. And while it's not always believed that the city does everything they can to work with the business owners, I can tell you that the code enforcement officials look at these codes, they look at the alternatives that are placed in front of them, we have engineers that are getting involved in it on the city side, and they make a determination on whether or not the building owner can do such a thing. So while there are some alternatives that may be brought up, we currently do not believe that there's anything out there that's going to save the lives or the property like the sprinkler system. So in early 2000s, the council, we approached the council, and a bill was passed for residential sprinklers for all new construction, residential and multifamily dwellings in the city of Annapolis. Since that time, we have had no loss of life or any major fire that has destroyed the building in a building that has had a working sprinkler system in it. Now, I will tell you that the sprinkler system's not 100%. There's no 100% out here, because if a fire starts on the exterior of the building, we could have problems where it burns up into the attic, and we burn a roof off of a place. So there's no 100%, but as a public safety professional and as your fire chief, I'm going to tell you that we're going to err on the side of caution, and sprinkler systems is where we think it needs to be, without a doubt, because that's what's going to save property and lives. And the building, Chief Building Inspector can give you some more on any alternatives that they've come across, but I can tell you that both the Fire Marshal's Office and the building inspectors, they look at everything that's brought in front of them, and they do go into it with an open mind, but we've not found anything that's been sufficient at this point.
That's correct.
Alderman, is there anyone to say something?
Yeah, just Alderman Gray, there's a couple of things I want to say, that one of the obstacles in implementing sprinklers has been the fact that the building owners, who are required to make their building safe, they pass that cost down to their tenant, which is very unfortunate, because some of these small businesses cannot afford it. So we're looking at language in this ordinance somehow to address that, even though we may not be able to. We're also exploring giving them a time limit, and we can't read the owners' minds, but, you know, we're hoping that if they, if we give them a deadline, they're going to think, "Oh, I better get a tenant in this building to get some money so I can pay for it." We're hoping that, you know, it might wake them up. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I've attended all of these sprinkler meetings since they started after the yacht fire, and all those other methods have been looked at, but there's also the weak link theory, that, you know, you might have one building sprinkled, and then the next one might just have some fire alarm. The fact that they are all pretty much shared walls, party walls, if you look down Main Street, the fire will spread rather quickly, so you don't want the weak link theory, you want them all to be sprinkled. But after all of these meetings, and, you know, what was it, a couple of months ago, when John Manassa made that statement, to me, that was okay. That's all I needed to hear, was that this is not quite the fail-safe method, but actually the best method to prevent the historic district from burning down.
Would your ideal situation be that this be phased in with the re-bricking, so that there isn't construction popping up all over the place?
Well, David Jarrell thought ahead on that, Director Jarrell thought ahead on that, and when we postponed the re-bricking of Main Street, he didn't want to postpone the installation of these, what they call laterals, you know. So we did do that trenching already, and I think they're pretty much installed all the way down Main and Francis. We still have a question on how we're going to address Maryland Avenue, but, so yeah, there wouldn't, so that we wouldn't have to, you know, if we eventually brick Main Street, then we don't have to trench it again. So the trenching work has been done. You might have seen it done, it was, they did it pretty efficiently.
Alderman on it.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So finally, we cut to the chase. There is a piece of legislation?
It's being drafted.
Can you tell us?
Well, my objective now is, before I even introduce that legislation, I just want a consensus among my colleagues to have your support in the objective to have sprinkled downtown. I don't want to even move forward if you don't think it's economic, I mean, just not the right thing to do. I just wanted support in at least moving this legislation to its draft form, and then introduced on first reader. So it's, it's still being drafted, and we have to meet again as far as a couple of things on, you know, how we're going to address Maryland Avenue, how much time we're going to give them. You know, I drafted the legislation from other cities, and it's funny, because some gave them, you know, three years, some gave them 20 years, and so we need to determine, you know, are we going to give them five years? The revolving fund has to be.
Okay, so what I'm drawing is, it will be mandatory, which I support. The next question is.
Thank you.
Do we have enough money in the revolving fund? Because we've talked about a low-interest or no-interest loan. I think only Joe Rubino took advantage of that.
You're correct.
Are we going to have enough money in the fund? And then there is a question, probably of Mr. Clark. When you're sprinkling older buildings that have plaster and things like that, you may save the building but lose the historic fabric, because you've melted all the plaster. And that's why we were talking at one point about halide systems, but then we figured we might kill too many people with those, and they're much more expensive. But these are historic structures with things that are susceptible to water damage. So at one point, I know, Chief Stokes was advocating that we require a connected fire alarm system immediately, because with our quick responses, we can often get there and stop a lot of damage. We won't get there as quickly as the sprinkler system going off, but is there an intermediate step of making sure? But I think the question for the historic fabric, because we also had talked about, we have a lot of historic homes or non-commercial buildings that are every bit as important to our historic fabric as the commercial downtown.
Are you calling me?
I did. I did.
Maybe you can say a few words about your thoughts on this and then answer my colleague's question.
I won't be as soft on that subject as others. So I'm Robert Clark, I'm the president of Historic Annapolis. Just for a very brief history lesson, uh, there are more 18th century buildings in the city of Annapolis than any other city in the country. Remember when our city was getting started before the revolution, there were no cities like Baltimore and Washington. Uh, we were at between Richmond and Philadelphia. When the Revolutionary War was over, Baltimore was discovered because of a significantly superior port. Virtually overnight, everybody that could left Annapolis, everybody. And because our, our city commerce was so dependent on maritime, and obviously, the new game was going to be Baltimore. The only people that didn't leave were the people who couldn't. And the people who couldn't, couldn't because of economic reasons. They moved into the existing housing stock, and you know the rest. Civil War, decades of poverty, not much going on except for the Naval Academy and state government, until the 1950s, when the developers discovered Annapolis and they moved in and started to do a few things. Our view, my view, is like the watch, uh, advertisement that we see in magazines, owners are transient owners. They own it for a period of time. It's not up to them to make decisions for the balance of time. And they should be prohibited from feeling that way. They own it for a period of time, they can do the best they can, they've got rules and regulations to keep them up. But it is, to me, for a building to be, to be destroyed by fire and not rebuilt within the hour, is disrespectful and is a slap in the face to the citizens of Annapolis. And that should be a federal crime of a thousand years in prison, to leave an empty spot on Main Street for over an hour. Uh, yeah, I have a, I have a perspective. I, I don't think that, um, that should be allowed to happen. My, my little bit of understanding on two issues, not to take exception to what you did, because I don't begin to know what you do. We are blessed by, uh, being in control of 13 18th century buildings. It's a $100 million real estate portfolio. It's all sprinkled. We are replacing the sprinkling with the mist system. And I think it's all the same water, it's a different kind of a, a, a way of putting the fire out. But to your point, Ross, the, the water can damage the patio significantly more than the fire does. And my understanding is the mist system keeps things frozen in time to the, the fire department to arrive and, and take charge. But, um, this is all supervised by the state, this is, I've got Michael Day, a 33-year veteran of the Trust, on my payroll, and that's the stuff he worries about, that's the stuff he watches. So, and we've got Lewis Contractors out of Baltimore, who's done Monticello, has done the Basilica, and so on, so these are people who know this stuff cold. So I, I believe that landlords have rights for sure, and I understand the landlord-tenant relationship. Uh, you can't retrofit a building, I don't believe, if a tenant's trying to do business at the same time. So part of this conversation, I would guess, would involve, when's your lease up? When does it renew? Because to be respectful to all parties, uh, no, but no tenant should be expected to close doors for however long it takes to retrofit. And so I think there's some more conversations, based on what little I know, that need to take place. But you know, I don't know if any of you get the Washington Post, but recently, there was an article about Judge Samuel Chase, who was one of our four signers. You know where Judge Chase lived? No, not the Chase Lloyd House, he never moved in there, that was his property. You know where Judge Chase lived? Ram's Head Tavern. And across the street from Ram's Head Tavern, you know Judy Herman's advertising studio there on West Street? When Congress met here in 1783 and 84, most of the Ben Franklins and Alexander Hamm, all those guys, stayed at Man's Tavern. Thomas Jefferson stayed at Mrs. Goochlin's Ordinary, B&amp;B. Judy Herman operate, uh, owns and operates in that building today. Can you imagine? Can you imagine? If something happened to those historic prob, a signer of the Declaration, Thomas Jefferson? Really? Why wouldn't it be a 100-year term in prison for, for not sprinkling? I don't know that that's up for us to debate. Thomas Jefferson? I mean, we're transients, and this, this sort of us to decide on this, I can't, I can't, I can't fathom a decision other than, you got to do it. Working with the tenants and so on. That would be my pitch.
And they'll also be saying that Robert Clark slept here one day, too, I think. Alderman Savage was next, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions. So are there, what are the alternatives to sprinklers? Would the mist system be, are you recommending that, would that be allowable under what's going to be recommended?
The mist system is, um, it is a type of sprinkler system, it's something that we would have to look at. So it also sprays water, but it, as it says, a mist, so it contains it. So it's, it's relatively new on the market, so that is a possibility, but keep in mind, that is a sprinkler system.
Okay. And so are there other technologies that, um, to my colleague's remarks, that are, I don't know, less invasive, less damaging maybe to the historic properties for installation, more affordable?
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, everything we looked at, the only thing that can accomplish what we need to accomplish to save these buildings is a sprinkler-type system.
Can you give me an idea of some of the other options that might be out there, though?
So there's been some research on some different types of paints out there that are supposedly fire-protective. Obviously, the, the amount of sheet rock or fire-resistant walls are out there, but all that does fall into the code, and, and none of those alternatives really meet any of the code requirements currently that I'm aware of, unless you all have something.
Well, my point earlier was that any system that you want to install, whether it be fire alarm monitoring, where there's smoke detectors throughout, or installing layers of sheet rock to protect the structure, uh, those are all things that have a purpose, and they have a, a positive impact, but they don't put the fire out. So a fire can rage with any of those systems, any of those alternatives, and that's where we're going. Alderman Arnett mentioned a Halon system, which is injecting a, a gas throughout a structure that suffocates the oxygen out of the room and suffocates the fire, so to speak. They have an application, like computer server rooms, where they don't want water to spray, and they, they don't have people in there that will, will succumb to the gas. Those systems are, um, not applicable to saving the, the structure of a building. Water mist systems, they may, um, work, they may delay the fire from getting out of control. I'm not sure that they're cost-effective, I have no idea how much those cost. They may be exotic and on the exotic end of the spectrum. So those are worthy of discussion, but they don't do what the basic sprinkler system, which has been around since the beginning of the country. I don't know the exact first sprinkler system, but I think it was...
1863.
Are you serious? Nah. I think it's a little bit older, actually. But that's the, that's the equipment that does the job.
So what kind of a cost, and maybe it's a little too early, but, well, I know this conversation's had before by the council, what kind of costs is estimated to have on
That's, it's hard to predict, because every building in Annapolis is unique and has unique challenges. So the installation cost and the cost, there's, I can't predict that for you. I really can't, because I'm not, we don't design systems, so that would have to go through a fire protection engineering product company, but they, you can't say, uh, one building on Main Street or all buildings on Main Street, so it's going to cost like $3,000. That's unrealistic. It's kind, there are so many different options and things that have to be taken into account, the size of the building, the occupancy of the building, um, the height, voids in the building, whether they, they can run the sprinkler pipe through the ceiling. City Hall here is a, is a prime example, there's a void space above here, so they didn't have to touch it, so they went through the void space and dropped everything down. So all those things have to come into account.
Okay. Yeah, and I'd like to, before we get to legislation or with it, I'd like to have some idea of what kind of costs we might be passing along to the businesses, um, and more information about how this revolving fund would, would work. Where would that money come from? How much of it would come from the city itself? And also, I'd just like to know from my colleagues who have, have, may have been here when the discussion was had last time, just what kind of thing, what were the issues, why did it not happen? Just to learn from your experiences in that regard.
We didn't, we didn't, um, we established the revolving fund under Ellen, and I think that actually happened before even Sheila and I were on the council. We have had sprinkler legislation, I think Alderman Israel and I were involved in one of them, that had to do with, uh, in any new construction certainly, but any renovations of properties anywhere in the city. It used to be over a certain square footage, I think it's over now a dollar value, uh, you have to put in a sprinkler. And for residential units, I'll give you a ballpark, it's about $30,000. So, uh, these buildings might be bigger, so it might be a little more, plus, you've got all of the issues of where do you keep the tank for the water, or how are you, if you're going to do that, how are you storing all the equipment for the, the pressure? We had a presentation years ago about Hillman Garage and, uh, using the spaces on Main Street and keeping the water tank for that in Hillman Garage, and then having the pipes go across to, uh, get the thing. So there's, as Mr. Manessas says, there's all kinds of different systems that you can envision, and, uh, the whole purpose of the revolving fund is to make it, to ease the economic burden. But, you know, unless we want to lose Main Street, which sooner or later we will, and Maryland Avenue right along with it, I mean, and particularly if we have a fire on a night with a heavy wind, um, we're just throwing the dice right now.
So we've got a lot of questions coming in. Have you done the full presentation, Chief? Do you have anything else?
Mr. Mayor? I just want to say there's $333,000 appropriated in the sprinkler fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to that?
Yeah, sure.
Um, because I do recall, I think, two residents using that fund over the years and paying it back. I'm sure there's some records in finance somewhere that will, I mean, you said there's 300,000 there. Any indication of when it was last used?
It's been very recently used, in the past six months.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe we can get a, a kind of an accounting of...
But I think that one that was in the past six months is the only one in a long time.
Okay.
So I don't want you to think it's...
Yeah.
...regularly used, it just happens to have been more recently used.
Right. But maybe we can get a, a kind of a timeline to indicate what's been used, and how much they borrowed out of that fund.
So Alderman Go was next.
There's a question about revolving.
Alderman Surini was after Alderman Go, and then Alderman Savage, and then...
I just was trying to let them continue the conversation before I got off topic. Um, so if a fire was to break out on Main Street right now, how fast could the fire department get there and get everything out in order to...
So obviously, like I talked about earlier, we're, we, for public safety, we're looking for early notification, which is a smoke detector, a fire alarm system, and then a sprinkler system to contain the fire until we get there. We typically arrive on any fire scene within five minutes of dispatch. But what I can tell you, we talked about this early activation, the first real big fire on Main Street that I was involved in was 1997, and that came in at like 5:00 in the afternoon on a very crowded Main Street. And by the time that was said and done, we got there relatively quick, but the fire was so far involved and was in void spaces of that building, we lost multiple businesses at the top of Main Street. They were worried about the State House, if fire was that severe. We had a historic wall where we had to close Main Street, and unfortunately, the wall had to come down because it was unstable. So we get there quick, we have a very good and very aggressive fire department, they're going to do everything they can to extinguish the fire, but I can't guarantee that, that we can get to it before it spreads.
So are you working with the Office of Emergency Management? In case something like that was to happen, I'm sure the city would consider that an emergency, to have some sort of plan in place so that if a fire was to break out, like in the dead middle of Main Street, where on a crowded day, you'd be able to get to it in a sufficient amount of time?
It's like any other crowded street in the city of Annapolis, we have streets that they park on both sides of the street, they were made for horse and buggies, we get to the fire, we'll, we'll get to it. The Main Street fire, we had to actually, we overwhelmed our water supply system, which in the city of Annapolis is an excellent system, and we were actually pumping water out of the city dock, that we needed that much water for the fire. So we're going to get there, we're going to get there in a quick period of time, but if the fire is well-involved and went undetected for an extreme period of time, then we're behind the eight ball from the get-go, and that just, we can't overcome that.
Alderman Turney's next.
Yeah, uh, this is to address Alderman Savage's concern about the business investment. What we have to consider is the return on investment of installing a sprinkler system specifically for the second floors, which are primarily vacant, well, not primarily vacant, but the several, a lot are vacant, and then this would, as John said, this would give them, um, life safety up on the second floor. The good news about that is, um, when you're dealing with these buildings, and when you're dealing with the second floor and they don't have a tenant yet, the main cost is getting the water up, and then, um, also the hose connection. If you want a good look at a, a sprinkler system, you can look at Starbucks, um, and the yogurt place. But when they go up to the second floor, um, unlike some of, um, Mr. Clark's buildings, they're not, they don't have historic furnishings in them, um, you know, we have to protect the envelope, but we're not as concerned with, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, you're the expert, but we're not as concerned with, um, valuables where perhaps a mist system would be needed. We could basically put in, um, like what a lot of restaurants do, when you look up, it's an exposed sprinkler system and they paint it black, you know, there's, there's economical ways to do the horizontal distribution, but the vertical is the meat of it, really, um, and John can explain that a little bit more. But, but this is a big return on investment and, and for the business owner, and at one of the sprinkler meetings, we had Joe Rubino speak to his building, and it is a really flagship application in the sense that he's got a, a unique retail, it's a, you know, it's not a chain, he's got Cocopelli down there, and then on the second floor, he sprinkled it fully, and he has two apartments, um, you know, for, um, they're affordable, um, and, um, it works. And, and that ideally would be the best situation for a lot of those businesses downtown. So, um, John, do you want to explain a little bit about the components of the sprinkler system? And, oh, oh, there was one other thing I learned, though, in through all this, is, that was very convincing to me, is that we really have optimized our response time, like, we went from eight minutes to five minutes from what Chief Stokes told me, or something like that, but down to five. So, you know, you've got to think about that perspective. We've optimized response time. But when you read this literature, fires are different now, and there's such a thing as, um, the flash, flash fire, and that's what happens the quickest. You know, you have a small fire, and then there's this flash fire, and that's where the sprinkler system comes in, where you cannot afford to wait the five minutes. But I'm not the expert.
I think Ellie should also point out that the sprinkler system gives you an option to maybe sometimes just have one form of egress, which is one of been, one of the challenges for us teneting the second floors.
Yeah, that's, um, we have to also have buy-in with the historic district. One of Mill's challenges is they're receptive to sprinklers, but they have to have a second form of egress, and there's some restrictions there, because they're not, or they are contributing building, it's, you know, every building is, is different, and they're going to have to look at it a little bit differently. But I, I was trying to address the mist system, I don't think that's as applicable as it is in, in Mr. Clark's property.
I will agree that there are different types of systems that might work better for different applications. The general sprinkler that most people are, are familiar with is, like you said, there's a, a water main that comes into the building and a wet... water main that comes into the building and a wet riser that goes up and branches off and covers all the space. And I can only refer back to our history. We've seen what happened at two fires on Main Street where the building was unsprinklered. And I distinctly remember a fire that nobody talks about, and that was the Coin Shop. The Coin Shop was a sprinklered building, and it's really not ever spoken of, but the sprinkler operated, put out the fire. Fire department got there, tried to prevent the damage from water, made sure the fire was out. Everybody went home. The building is the same as it ever was. So, there are success stories right on Main Street. There's success stories of being able to create apartments, expand businesses. There's success stories of fires that have been put out by the sprinklers. And that's why we're saying there's no alternative that is as effective. And we did have, at the work group that was talking about this, different sprinkler representatives from the National Fire Sprinkler Association. We actually had a local contractor come in and talk about price per square foot, and the price per square foot varies depending on the building. But, you know, he was sort of throwing that ballpark number 30 to 50 out, you know, in that ballpark range, 30 to $50,000 for our average building. So that's what we're looking at. Now, the underground piping is a little bit more. That can be 10, it can be 20, it can be $30,000 for the underground portion. So, the numbers are there, but they're not as bad as, you know, your imagination is probably worse than what the real numbers are. It is a hardship, though, and we understand that, and that's why there needs to be a long discussion over how it comes about.
Didn't make any friends at one of the meetings I attended when the businesses were complaining or something, and I said, "Well, you wouldn't say this if you wanted to put a hot tub up there. It's just getting water up to the second floor." That didn't go over very well, but I'm getting a thick skin.
Alderman Pendel was next. He hasn't spoken yet. No, you're okay. Sheila's good. Let's get over, Alderman Gay was the next hand up, and then Rob Savage.
So, Theresa, you said there's $330,000 in this revolving fund? So, if each building roughly with underground and all of that stuff, I don't know, 50, 60,000, and they all line up to do it at the same time so that we can minimize construction and stuff, and the fund dries up, who pays for it? Like, does that fall back on us? Would Historic Annapolis kick in some funds or?
Ellen got money from the state. And I think-
And then we would have to pay the state back eventually?
No. No, the state just put the money in the-
It would have to be fixed.
Our expenditures have to be limited to what's in our fund unless you make an appropriation from the general fund into that fund, or the state gives us money that goes into that fund or whatever. We are limited by appropriation authority.
Alderman Savage was next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, where were you recommending this be done? Just downtown? Would it include West Street or just Main Street?
So, obviously, the fire service would say every building should be sprinkled. But we're talking the historic district, we're talking downtown. That's the questions we get all the time about the major fires downtown. We do have building codes in place, laws in place, that new construction's going to get sprinkled for most part, most new construction will. New residential structures, we have multiple structures going in that have mixed occupancy. They're being sprinkled already, but the biggest concern seems to be is the downtown, the Main Street, Maryland Avenue area, the historic areas downtown, and that's what this whole thing was focused on, because that's the questions we get. Now, we understand, we're telling you, our feeling is, the only way to prevent it would be the sprinkler systems, but you are the ones that have to make the hard decision on whether or not to mandate this, and we totally get that.
I don't know, I think there are some restaurants that might need sprinklers on West Street.
I'm all sprinkler. Nearly.
I have more questions. So, the revolving fund, City Manager, so can you explain to me, does that function kind of like a grant? Or is that money just given to them as a, more of a loan?
It's a loan.
A loan, okay.
It's a loan. So it gets repaid, and when it gets repaid, the repayments go back into the fund to be loaned to someone else.
Okay.
So it revolves.
Okay. Do we have any, I know it might be too early, but do you have any idea how much it might, we might have to increase that fund for, if we were to open this up, require it for Main Street? Not yet. So, I'm also wondering, like, if this is done on Main Street, is there any equipment in the fire department or some asset that can be sold or that we won't need any longer because the sprinkler system will be up?
You wouldn't, you're not that lucky, no.
No.
Not at all. Yep.
Well, so the cost questions are important for me. I'm not doubting the importance. But, you know, we have a lot to balance out. We have, you know, sea level rise and climate resiliency downtown, the buildings, the buildings, yeah, that would put the fires out, but we have that to worry about for cost. We have some of the public housing that needs, you know, people are being impacted right now with their quality of life and their health, and, you know, I think we may want to think about giving them some money. So, all these things, and that's also really a safety concern, too, for me. All these things, I think, we need to balance the costs. I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I just, all these things I'm wrestling with personally about how to, and that's where I'd love to sit down with my colleagues and get their feedback.
Just for a point of clarification, there's no requirement that we bear the cost, that they don't have to put sprinklers in unless we lend them the money to do it. We're trying to assist in the cost by having a loan fund. We, and the loan fund right now is not limited to downtown. It's any developer or property owner of older buildings that do not have sprinkler systems installed at the time of application. So if you wanted it to be downtown, you'd have to amend this to define the geographical area. You could define it as, "We'll lend you up to $10,000." So instead of having five people use all of it up, you get 30 people, right? So you can structure it however you want. But I just want to make it clear that if this council were to pass an ordinance requiring sprinklers, you're not required to fund it.
Yeah, that's a good point. Although I am, you know, that, it sounds like it could cost, on average, $30,000 for residential, and that's not even including the underground pipes, I guess. So that, you're talking about 60, 50, $60,000 total. That's a very high cost to put on the shoulders entirely of the businesses. At least, that's, I mean, I haven't spoken to them yet, but that's what I'm guessing.
So Ellie, we've got to wrap this up by?
Yeah, no, now I'm going to sound like Robert Clark. The reason why I want unanimous support on this is that we, as the city, have to say to these building owners, "You are the steward of this property. It is your responsibility to make it safe." It's not ours. It's not ours. They bought the building, they have a responsibility. And that's why I want this legislation to be some teeth into it. We're going to have to give a carrot, because I don't think I want every op edler addressed to me, but we have to give them a carrot, if you will, and say, "Look, you know, there will be this revolving fund." The other idea is, I'm looking at this panel, and we probably could go before the General Assembly and ask them for a few bucks. What do you think, Mayor Gavin Buckley?
I'll talk it up with Ellie next time I see her.
Yeah, we'll talk with Sarah. I mean, that is the most convincing argument. But that's, again, that's why I want a full support of the council. If we're, if we just give an inch and say, "Oh, no, they're not, they're not going to do it." I mean, we've been fighting this battle for at least, I know, of nine years. So we have to, we have to be the grownups in the room and say, "Look, we want our historic district protected. You bought the building, you have to make it safe. We'll help you out if we need to."
So what we know, what we know now is what we've been doing hasn't worked. So even when we've tried to bring the water or to the horse or whatever you call that, that has not worked. So we either mandate it, we incentivize it, and this is what this is about. There's no decisions are being made here, but really, if we work together, we can find some way. I think we could even look at, I reckon we should, look at some way to take it out of the property tax or something like that, you know. Alderman Gay?
Let's get through Ross's and Sheila's legislation first, I think. Yeah, no, I was, well, knowing Linda, she'll probably have it ready in a couple weeks, so, but, I mean, I would like to introduce it in the fall sometime. You know, it'll be on First Reader and-
Okay. It is 4:00, so let's move on. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm going to have to leave, four, an hour into the, or half an hour into that, so I'm going to hand it over to Ellie.
Absolutely. Yeah, Joe's here. He's sitting outside. Joe's here. He's on the, he's sitting outside.
Okay.
You're going to be going with him.
So, Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Are we starting the recording of the center meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And a place of allegiance, too?
Yep. Especially if you have to. Did you do it for them, so you can skip it if you do?
We did that, yeah.
Okay. But you still need to open the meeting.
Okay, I was saying, okay.
You need to say that on the record to get to that. Is Susie going to get Joe? I saw him walking around.
Susie, could you bring Joe in, please? And it's, we're about to start a closed session, so. A special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Wednesday, September 19th, 2019, is called to order at 4:02. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Buckley?
Here.
Alderman Tyrney?
Here.
Alderman Payon?
Here.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Here.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Here.
Alderman Gay?
Yeah.
Alderman Savage?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Mr. Chair, we never actually adjourned the last part of it.
Yes, you did.
We did?
You don't have to vote to exit a work session. Just, no voting.
I checked the rules. Ms. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Are we closed? Don't we have to go into closed session?
I think you have to read that out.
Oh, my bad, sorry. The first item on the agenda is Business and Miscellaneous, beginning with ID 61419. A proposed closed session of the City Council in accordance with the Annotated Code of Maryland General Provisions Article, Section 3305B7, to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. The discussion topic is the status of the opioid litigation.
So, this time I had to entertain a motion to move pursuant to Annotated Code of Maryland General Provisions Article 3-305B7 to go into closed session. Got a good motion? Second?
Why are we going to the first session?
For opioid discussion update on opioid litigation. That's what we're doing right now, yep. Yeah, yeah, we're about to, yep.
Does it have to be closed session?
They've asked for that, so. Okay, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
To go into closed session, right? We got a motion and a second, right?
No, I didn't get anything yet. I didn't get a motion and a second to go into closed session. Yeah. I heard somebody make the motion, I didn't hear a second. She's sorry. Okay, well, I'll do it. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Tyrney?
Yes.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pendel Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Gay?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Okay, everyone's microphones off.
Okay, we're back in special. We're back in the special meeting.
The other lawsuit.
Yeah, double whammy. You are. Okay. Ms. City Attorney, would you please present the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is legislative action on second reader, beginning with Resolution R 4019, classic wooden boat rendezvous and race docking fee waiver.
Oh, Aldman Arnett.
So unfortunately, I didn't realize Monday night during the flurry of all of this that we really needed to take some action Monday. The event sponsors needed to be able to give people timely notice of whether there was space available on city dock. So at this point, I think the, regardless of the merits of waiving or not, the resolution is moot, so I would like to withdraw the resolution.
All in favor? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, please say yea.
Aye.
Aye.
Not saying yea.
I'm reading my script. Okay, any opposition? Okay, so the motion is we're withdrawing R 40-19.
Look, Madam City Clerk. You're not moving to reconsider, are you?
I guess I'm not. I'm not sure. What is it we've withdrawn since we already passed this the other night?
We voted to reconsider and then postponed.
All right, I thought that we had passed it and then...
We reconsidered.
That's when the city manager chimed in that this was not right. I mean, she'd say that, but there are other things you need to talk about and I sent you guys all this stuff, which you did, and I was under the impression that it had already passed. Perhaps it passed on second reader.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
We had, it did, and they made a motion to reconsider, and then it, and they read till tonight, today.
Okay, so it's been withdrawn?
Yep. Today. Ms. City Attorney, would you please say what's next on the agenda?
The agenda is complete.
I move that we adjourn before we add something else to it.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, I mean, meeting adjourned. That was short.
Right.
So we did all that just to withdraw it?